Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectments meeting for Tuesday, April 15th at 5:00 PM. We are in the Harry Butters Selectments Chambers in the Norwood Town Hall at 566 Washington Street. And this is being recorded by our good friends at NCM for public broadcast. And we will, even though it's a shorter agenda tonight, I'm still going to go ahead and have us do the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silent Reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we are picking back up with our discussions around the special town meeting warrants. I propose that we handle this by consent agenda because there's a number of items on here, but we know that not all of the items are going to be things that we want to have discussion around. So what I'll do is I'll go down the list of items. If you see one that you would like to hold, just say "hold" and I'll make a mark by that one and we'll discuss them at the end. Does that sound good to everybody?
Okay.
Great. All right. So we'll start with the special town meeting number one. So the first item would be, is there any discussion we'd like to have about internal transfers? All right. Is there any discussion we'd like to have about the appropriation to the Special Education Stabilization Fund? Can I hold for Mr. Plasko? Is there any discussion we'd like to have about the appropriation for school technology needs? Okay. Any appropriation, discussion about the appropriation to mass health Medicaid expenditures? Okay. Discussion for authorization to enter into MOU for foster care transportation expenses? Discussion appropriation for general government and school integrated hiring system? Okay. Any discussion for additional appropriation for water tank design and replacement?
Madam Chair, I'll have a hold on that.
Any discussion for appropriation to compensated absences reserve fund? Okay. Any discussion for, number nine, established capital stabilization fund? Okay. Number 10, any discussion for initial CSF appropriation?
Hold please.
Okay. Number 11, any discussion for creation of pension reserve fund? Okay. Number 12, appropriation to pension reserve fund, any discussion on that? And any discussion on number 13 for unpaid bills?
Just kidding.
Now, do you want me to go ahead and move to special meeting two or would you like to take care of one first?
Could we maybe make a motion to approve all those that we passed on?
And then we'll come back to this.
And make a motion to approve special town meeting number one, item 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 11, 12, and 13.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Donnelly.
Just a question, so is that approved and the board recommends them, five to zero? Is that my understanding?
Yeah, so there's, as a reminder, there's two parts. One is us saying we approve it to be on the warrant, as in there's nothing untoward about it.
We haven't, we haven't, no way it's held to discuss that it's unanimous.
I would agree, but I just want to make sure we're all on that same page, that there's unanimous agreement on those items.
Yeah. And then the second is the unanimous agreement essentially saying, and the board is, you know, all unanimously agreeing that those, that we support those going. So, okay. So, we've had the motion made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Donnelly, all in favor of approving and supporting the ones that were listed. Please say "aye."
Aye.
All opposed? Chair also votes "aye," so unanimous for numbers 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 11, 12, and 13. Would we like to take care of the second meeting or would we like to start discussion on the first meeting? I'd kind of prefer to.
Let's see how number two goes.
Yeah, okay. So, same process. Ask for a hold for anything that you would like to have discussion on from the special town meeting number two. So we'll start with item number one, three-year terms for the town moderator. Any discussion on that? Okay. Item number two, pilot agreement with Tangent Development LLC, any discussion? Number three, acceptance of the HERO Act under Master General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, under.
Clause.
Clause 22I, don't say clause that much, 22I. Any discussion on that? Okay. Number four, acceptance of HERO Act under Master General Law 59, is that the, oh, it's under J. This was B clause J of the same Master General Law. Any discussion? Okay. Number five, direct deposit acceptance for town employees, any discussion? Number six, contracts with a five-year term, any discussion? Number seven, which we currently see a strike through on.
And, sorry, Madam Chair, I could, number eight should have been a strike through as well. Those are withdrawn.
All right, so both of those will be withdrawn for now. All right, so number seven and number eight being withdrawn, we'll move to number nine. Number nine, amendment to floor plan overlay district, any discussion? Flood plane, excuse me. Okay. Number 10, amendment to non-conforming uses and structures, any discussion? Number 11, commercial and personal kennel prohibition in the MCMOD, any discussion? Number 12, multifamily residential use within the Boston Providence Highway District.
Just a discussion, point of information, just make sure legal counsel is on board with that, it's not allowed on that trunk highway, just, we have to be clear on that.
So you want to hold 12 and we can talk about it?
We can discuss a little bit or we can, yes, send a motion to the legal counsel.
Okay, so we'll come back to 12.
Just as a matter of course, legal counsel reviews all of our, before you, before town meeting sees a complete warrant, two different lawyers have some counsel reviewed it in detail to make sure it achieves what we want to.
Given the manager's answer, do you still want to talk about it more?
No, we're good.
We're good?
The OZ approves, that's fine.
All right, so then we're good on number 12. All right. Number 13, accessory dwelling units as a special residential use.
I'd like to hold out two.
All right.
Could we make a motion to approve 1 through 6? To renumber, number nine is number seven, number 10 is number eight, number 11 is number nine, and number 12 is number 10, and approve all of those articles?
All right, so it's both approval and renumbering in light of the two withdrawn? Okay, so Mr. Plasko has made the motion to.
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Lane, seconds. Any further discussion on that? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, unanimous, okay. Would we like to swing back around to discussion on the ones we've held or would we like to drop down to Community Preservation Act?
You're the boss.
Community Preservation Act is just the board's opinion, they end up on the warrant, so you could, I think we could wrap that one up. It's your call, we can wrap that up first and then we'll go back.
I think, I think we could wrap it up. Community Preservation Act projects, do we have any discussion we want to have on any of, or are we, are we good?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the Community Preservation Act projects as described and to further note the board's support of the preservation projects as described.
All right, do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Sad. All in favor? Please say "aye."
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, unanimous there. Okay, so then I'd say we are ready to start having discussion on the items that we held. So we'll switch back to special town meeting one. Let's start with number two, appropriation to Special Education Stabilization Fund, and I believe that Mr. Plasko would like that.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment that I don't have a problem at all with, obviously we established this fund in '21, I think it was, and it certainly has a good purpose. I have a little concern about the amount that we're adding to it. This takes us up to, as they pointed out, the maximum that they can have, but in 2021 we appropriated $600,000 into this fund and an additional $250,000 in '22. In '23, they used $150,000 of it, leaving them with the current $700,000 balance. I know we want to keep hedging against unforeseen circumstances, but it seems like we haven't had them to any extent that this account can't manage, and, you know, I'm hopping on saving as much money as possible can until after we've had a good financial discussion of where we are and then decide in the fall or whenever where to put all these monies instead of tying them up now. So I personally would like to support a lower number, maybe $300,000, which would get them a million in the, in the account, which based on past history, as I just mentioned, should be very sufficient and yet still hedging to unknown possibilities in the future. So I just, I just think we should modify the number from what the school committee asked, and apparently the Finance Commission is willing to recommend, but I just think that's more than necessary and we should hold on to the money until we've done our full financial evaluation that we've promised to do.
Is that a motion to lower it?
I make a motion to recommend the amount of $300,000.
Okay. Do I have a second on Mr. Plasko's motion?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay.
I have no more.
So the, sorry, Madam Chair, so we're trying to get to a million and a half eventually?
A million and a half is the maximum.
Right.
So there's no try to get there. Putting the full amount in would get to the maximum that you're allowed to put aside.
Yeah.
Not a bad practice, but at what point is it sort of, is it overkill? You could argue it is, and I probably agree with that. I think I would agree with Mr. Plasko on a lower number, only because when do we ever max anything out? We're just not a, you know, we're not a W-Town, we're not a Lexington or Concord that can say, oh, put the most in there that we could do it. Everything we do is, we put some in and we try to do it reasonably. It's a large amount of money to max out a fund that's supposed to be used for unforeseen special ed expenses, so I think either A, somewhere in the middle to the point of Mr. Plasko's motion, or even waiting to the fall on some of these items, even though I support some of them, would be appropriate.
Yeah. And just thinking in terms of, if this at-town meeting, someone could also make a similar motion to lower it, is that a more appropriate place? Because you'd have the school committee and.
Well, it is always, it is always your warrant. I mean, there's a couple of options. The board can say, this is all we're comfortable putting forward, the FinCom has their recommendation, they're allowed to do it, the school committee has their recommendation, they would then maybe get up to amend the motion. The other thing you could do is put the motion forward as-is, and the board could take the vote that the board does not support the motion as-is and recommends the amount of X, and as such, we'll make a motion to amend at-town meeting. So it's, it's a balance between, do you want to honor what was requested, but then make it very clear to town meeting that you think something different and will do something different? You could go either way, and I know that's the discussion that we can have on a couple of these other articles, that, do you want to go toward with what the recommendation is, and then do you vote indefinite postponement? Do you vote to take it up in the fall? Do you vote a lower number as the recommendation? Then you're pre-giving town meeting, if you will, two options to look at. It's up to you to decide which one you want to do. I, I think either would be appropriate, i.e., to the larger discussion about all of these items, free cash doesn't disappear. The more money we hold on to, the more flexible we are financially. I don't see a world where we put so much money away and then we have a really bad budget year. I understand it's a policy that we don't want to use free cash to offset the budget. It's a standard policy, I wrote that into our financial policies, and in a perfect world, we shouldn't do that, but we're here to provide services to the citizens, so it's still very difficult to go to the average member of the public and say, hey, I'm reducing a service somewhere down the road on something while putting money in the bank.
And if something comes up in this area.
Do you feel like it's sufficient to cover it based on past experiences?
They won't actually have the shortfall till the end of the year, so we have plenty of time to go and, and.
Make an adjustment.
Make an additional supplement.
To that point, one thing I think about, and this, this relates to capital stabilization as well, which I think we should be putting money away for projects we have coming up. We're going to put money into a fund, what if next year we do have a really hard budget and we're cutting back? We've put money aside for what? Not having enough money to fund your operating budget isn't really what a special purpose stabilization fund is supposed to be for.
Sure.
So how do we say, well, we're going to cut, you know, five cops and three staffers and six teachers next year, but we've got money for unforeseen special ed expenses? That becomes a little bit more difficult to say, well, are they unforeseen? And the law does say unbudgeted, but I don't think that means we can simply say, yay, cut the budget and use the money, because if that's the case, we should have a police reserve fund and a fire reserve, it just, where, where does that stop? And where's the best use of our money to maintain flexibility? I don't want to go to the community next year and say your taxes are going up no matter what and we're cutting your services, but that's, that's me. I guess I don't want to go to the board and say that.
All right. Just one comment, just one question, so, thank you, Madam Chair. The numbers that Mr. Plasko just cited, have we ever, to anybody's knowledge, funded the stabilization fund for sped at its maximum level, or have we been under the max?
We've always been under the max. I think we just established it a couple of years ago.
21, it was established in 21, yes.
Which in my mind is three years ago, maybe it's four years ago.
Okay, thank you. I think it's a good suggestion Mr. Plasko makes, and I certainly would be in support of his, his motion.
And then just to refresh me, what's the highest we've ever been with it up to this point?
I think it's at its highest now, seven.
Eight hundred and fifty thousand.
So with the 300, we'll still be pushing up above the high?
20% above its highest roughly.
All right. Mr. Sad?
Bill's been here for a long years, he knows what he's doing, so I'm supporting Bill.
All right. Any further discussion before we move into taking a vote on Mr. Plasko's motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor of lowering to the 300, please say "aye."
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Did you get it? You got that?
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimous. All right. So, do we need to take a separate vote for our, now that we have voted or we've adjusted it, do we still need to take a separate vote for the putting it on and supporting it factor in this new form?
I think, is everyone in support of the motion at $300,000? Support of, I think, so I think it's five, five to zero is clear.
Yeah, okay.
The, the second vote is just so we know what to put in there.
What we'll have to do that we don't do a lot of these days is have a separate motion for indefinite, for changing the amount of money at-town meeting.
Well, I think you're changing the motion so that it reads $300,000, and the FinCom can then amend that.
No, they make recommendations first. They lead off with the recommendations. So they'll make, assuming they don't change the vote between now and then, they'll make $880,000 and we'll make a motion to amend to 300,000.
I would do it differently, but I'll go along with you on that.
So, we have the, the draft yellow sheets here. Mr. Mizuka, will the verbiage be modified just to cover this?
Right.
I think so, yeah.
That they made this specific request and that we've, we've made an alternate suggestion.
All right. So that will take care of item two for on-town meeting number one. So we'll move down to number seven. This is discussion on the additional appropriation for the water tank design and replacement. Mr. Donnelly, I believe you were the one that had the hold on that?
Yes. Well, obviously, it's, it's an important project and, you know, I think we, we all have agreed that needs to get done. My only question would be, with the additional 3.5 million that's going to be borrowed for this, when we were planning this project previously using SRF funding, we did agree that you're suggesting, Mr. Mizuka, to pause the year that, of water lining project, the four and a half million dollar, you know, the years that the, the payments for the water tank are hitting. Will we need to pause an additional year of water lining project work because of this extra 3.5 million that we're going to be borrowing?
So the short answer is, we probably should, but we've got to look at the, sort of the long-term implications of that. Likely because the project cost is going up, what we would do is, we originally figured we would pause water lining for probably two years, the year before we start making the payments, and then the year we make that payment, so that way we can absorb that debt payment with less of an impact to the ratepayers. We would likely kick that out a third year, just to make sure that we're smoothing out that rate increase, so it's not just a jump up. So the short answer is probably, that year still would be probably two years off.
Okay. I think it's important that we just maintain that policy as seems to be a pretty good hit if we were, were doing debt payment for both the water lining project and the pipeline in the same year, for that particular year. So, thank you. That answered my question.
Mr. Sad?
I think I was against this probably a year ago, but I think in light of this 3.5 million additional, what's the chance of, I talked to the Wunsaka Water Department in Rhode Island, and they lined it, and they go in and just spray it and line it. What's the chance of doing that?
We, we looked at those options, it was part of the report that you got. One of the tanks was built in the 50s and one of them was built in the 30s. So if you look at the long-term, this is actually the cheapest option. We would spend money doing that, but we would still be having to fundamentally replace the tanks in 10 or 15 years. So if you're looking out over the, the life cycle of a homeowner in Norwood, your method would cost them more in time.
Well, their tank's 80 years old down in Wunsaka and they did it, so I don't know what that difference is.
Wunsaka's a crap hole, I wouldn't want to compare our community to theirs.
Well, I know that, but it's, just water is water. All right.
I disagree fundamentally that water is water.
Is there going to be, I can't remember from those requests, is there going to be a change in capacity?
Not much. We don't really need more capacity than we currently have to maintain the pressurizing, the pressure on the system.
Are there any further discussion on the water tanks? All right, so.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we support article, that we put Article 7 for the water tanks on the warrant and that the board support the warrant article.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly to add to the warrant and to support the item.
Can we just clarify, opposition be by borrowing?
By borrowing. Thank you.
Second.
Yeah, we don't have any other option than to borrow.
Seconded by Mr. Plasko. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. All right, so that takes care of number seven, we'll move down to number nine. We either, Mr. Plasko, establish the capital stabilization fund.
Yeah, maybe, with your permission, I can just address both at the same time because they're close relationship. I'm kind of repeating myself from the past, but I'll try to make a clearest, clearer and shorter statement and we can go from there. I believe that this is the wrong timing for these two items, these two articles. I think they should wait again till the fall, at least, when we've had time to study the full financial picture and take them up at that time. I know the Finance Commission has expressed the concern that somehow this money's going to disappear if we don't appropriate it in all these different accounts, but as long as it's not spent at this town meeting, it won't be and can't be until we have another town meeting. So we don't have to worry about the money disappearing per se. As far as the stable, the capital stabilization fund specifically, any stabilization fund, like the stabilization fund, can help a community save money in the long run, and I believe that's the Finance Committee's motive behind the recommendation. However, as DOR has recommended to other communities, when considering establishing a capital stabilization fund, we should first meet with our capitalway committee and make certain we are all using the same planning strategy, establish criteria use to establish, to prioritize capital projects, that we have a complete list of Ds and goods, good estimates of the cost to establish an improvement program that provides a blueprint for the community's capital expenditure needs. This is one of the most important responsibilities to coordinate community planning, financial capacity, and physical development. We must determine what the sources will be for this fund, through a dedicated source or a minimum dollar amount or a percentage of the operating budget each year. To simply set up the account and put in money once is not adequate. Fund has to have a plan, and we haven't talked about any of those potentials, methods, and what the effects of them might be on operating budget or other, other departments. So, this is how we're going to replenish this account. It's particularly important that we consider this before we just simply rush to establish it. So I think all this must happen before we establish the fund. And I know the separate item, that had a lot to do with putting the money in, whether we should put, again, $2 million in at this time without a clear plan, and likewise, there's been some talk around regarding, well, just set up the account, and we'll, we'll fund it later. But that seems silly to me, we put it to a meeting, tell me, so what are we doing? Even if you open a bank account, you put in a minimum deposit, you put something in there, you have a reason for opening that account. So I think, again, if we're not putting any money in it, and not going to, obviously we're not going to be spending anything, it can wait till the fall or whenever we take up the establishment of the account and ready to put money into it, and that can happen the same night, just as they would be happening the same night this time. So there's no reason to rush and get this done now, if you agree with me that we haven't got all the ducks in order before making appropriation and that we should wait until we, again, hopping on that, being careful with our finances until we've had a full, in-depth review and conclusion as to what we're going to do for long-term financial strategy and stuff. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Donnelly?
I will agree and disagree slightly with Mr. Plasko. I do agree that at this point in time, putting $2 million into a reserve fund right now seems like a, like this is not a good time to do that, and that we should go through the exercises that Mr. Plasko describes in terms of, both from a capitalway perspective as well as just the committee work that's needed to take a look at our structural deficit. However, I do support the establishment of the fund, I think that ultimately it is a good tool to have available, and I would not be opposed to establishing the fund right now, so I would vote to establish the fund, Article 9, but no on Article 10, to fund it at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would take a similar position to Mr. Donnelly, I think I said that last meeting, that I think establishment of the fund is a good idea. I know the, the FinCom had worked hard on that. Just sort of for discussion, I might know your answer on this one, but like with special ed stabilization, you know, the, the recommendation, you know, you thought would, should be less, is there, is there a number you're, you would be comfortable with, or is it just?
Well, not really, because I don't know that I'm opposed to the $2 million.
Yeah.
Once we know where we're going with it, right? My, my thought is that right now, we don't know where we're going, we haven't got it really well planned, and that may be 500,000 is enough, that might be 3 million.
3 million, right, could be more than.
Right, so, put, put more in is nicer, because I want to hold money available, as I say, a flexibility to make decisions on the long financial planning, so the less we put into this, the better.
Yeah.
But I still don't think it makes sense to do it this time.
Yeah, I can see it both ways on that. I think that for discussion at town meeting, you know, to defend the position of creating this would be, it puts the onus on, you know, us, this working group or whomever, to really, by a fall town meeting, be able to articulate in an even better way, this is the recommendation. So, you know, I think that is probably what I would feel comfortable saying at, in May. You know, this sets it up, I don't, hopefully, people feel the same way.
Mr. Sad?
Got a motion, just move it along. Oh, would you have something to say?
Yeah, one question is, my impression of your intent is, it's not that we never want to do it, it's that we'd like to do it in the fall, just not right now.
More planning and more, more important. So what, just exactly what we're doing, what we intend to do, how we intend to maintain it?
And then a question for the manager. Are there ever situations where we do, I remember the, in some cases, having the fund and the money going into the fund, there can be some efficiencies. There's not in this case, but is there any merit to continuing to get the town body used to the establishment of a fund and the money going into the fund don't have to be the same in action?
Yeah, they don't. The Stormwater Enterprise Fund has to be established at the, prior to the start of the fiscal year. You can establish a stabilization fund at any time, you always are taking two motions. We use the example, it's the equivalent of opening a checking account with $0 in there. There's no harm in doing that. a checking account with $0 in there. There's no harm in doing that. That way, if money materializes, or we get money from something, we can, town meeting usually has to vote it anyway. There's no harm. There's no reason to, though.
Mr. Sad?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. But everything I read says this is a good use of free cash.
Yes, but, just like any great answer, it's a yes, but. Putting money aside for capital is good. We have immediate capital needs next year and likely the following year. And I'm not talking, you know, as everyone knows, we generally don't do nice capital projects. We do necessary capital projects. We're replacing roofs and generators and fixing existing equipment. So, those are generally things we're going to have to do. We know that next year's budget is going to have a hole in it. Yes, the best-case scenario is you don't use free cash to balance your budget, and you should put money away for capital. But we know what our costs are going to be roughly next year. So, are we putting money aside into a secret little fund over here for future capital projects, but then we're cutting services to the public next year? It just, it's not necessarily, that's not great planning. You need to have the money to save. And I think I try to use the analogy that, you know, let's say you hit a scratch ticket and you win a couple of bucks. That's a good thing. Or you get a bonus from your employer. You always want to put some of that away. But we've got to pay our mortgage. And our mortgage is our regular operating cost. It's what we have to pay to operate. So, how are we putting money away when we don't know how we're going to make the mortgage payment at the end of the month? And feel free to tell me I'm wrong on that, but it's just the way I look at it is, we know that mortgage payment's coming due. We've got to pay our bill next year. And we're going to put money away to, how do we pay that bill? And if it's cut services to the public, the problem then is, hey, we're going to charge you for something we didn't used to charge you for. We're going to cut a service that you used to have, but we've put money away for, at some point, we know we're going to spend it. Of course, we are. And I know that if I could just, the Town Hall project keeps looming. Yes, at some point, this building's going to need a renovation. That's going to be a large costly project. If we think we can put enough cash aside for that, we're going to be saving for it until it's 200th anniversary.
Thank you. Again, without a plan, without knowing what we're doing it for, it's a good thing to use free cash for capital expenses rather than budget, except for when you have to. And practically every town is doing that, using some of it for operations. But if we don't have a plan, if we don't know what we're putting aside for, and we just agree with spending on needed capital funds, why are we stopping at $5 million this year? There may be $5 million in the first year, but I'm sure the next year, there's plenty of items that could be moved forward, and spend the $2 million now and save, again, save borrowing costs, save increased, you know, cost of living, what's the word, I want inflation. You know, why aren't we doing that now? So, I just don't, just don't see it.
Yeah. No, I understand.
Just don't see it at this time.
Is there anything on the horizon in terms of the state's thinking about stuff like Chapter 70, or, you know, just because you read about all these towns that are in a similar position to us, or probably worse. I mean, and I know the state frowns on filling a budget hole with free cash, but it seems like everyone's going to have to do that, right?
Of course. And to talk about that for a minute.
If you have reasons.
Right. It's never a good practice, but we don't exist just to meet our financial policies. We don't exist just to win an award for how well we budget. We have to provide services to the public. That's our mission. That's our focus. That's why we are all here, is the services we provide to the public. So, if you have to do something you don't like, like using surplus revenue to plug your budget, yeah, it's not a good idea. What's the alternative? Raise taxes or cut services. And I'm a fan of if you can delay raising taxes, that's a good thing. So, we're trying to balance all these things, good financial policy over here. We always want to do that. I don't want an override this year. If we don't have to do one next year, I don't want to do one next year. And I sure as hell don't want to lay off any staff members. So, this is where those balances all sort of come in. It's good to save money, but we're not able to pay our bills.
Right.
If we spend all this money, and the Finance Committee's email of Sunday, that they took their last vote on, including this $2 million, you've got three and a half million.
Tied up.
Leftover. And next year, we might, if we're lucky, come up with another $4 million. That's not even enough.
To fill that.
To fill the current budget. Never mind cost of insurance, cost of salaries, and everything else that's going to go up. And it would leave us with zero for emergencies. So, we have to take a better view than that. If we can't just be throwing it all away, but tying it all up, even if on their own merit, it sounds like a good idea, you know?
One other question, just because I really haven't heard this articulated yet, but maybe one of you have heard it in hallway chatter. Is there a particular thing that people are worried about taking, like, we're like, oh, we want to put it in, you know, this account to protect it, so that it doesn't get used? Is someone aware of any push to spend the free cash in that way? I am not aware of any, but I just want to make sure there's none.
And like I said, they can't.
Right. They have to have the town meeting to...
I mean, I think that, all right, to your point, I have not heard that, Jeff. I don't think you've heard nothing of that. There's no secret plan out there to spend free cash on new hats for everyone in town, or something like that. That being said...
Well, not frivolous. I'm talking a serious thing that people are worried about.
Nothing that anyone's been talking about. But to that point, if town meeting wants to do that, are we, I guess, is the narrative, we're worried somebody's going to spend free cash, full stop, town meeting only needs free cash.
Right.
If we're saying, let's hide money so town meeting doesn't spend it, or let's put it away so it's harder for town meeting to spend, I don't know. I mean, if town meeting wants to do what town meeting wants to do, they can do it. I don't know if we should make financial decisions based on, we're worried town meeting's going to make a different decision. I don't, something doesn't sit necessarily right with me with that argument. But I've heard of nothing. And if there is, maybe, what if the whole community decided they did, and I know I'm using a frivolous example, everyone wants to buy hats for everyone to, I mean, if town meeting decides to do that, we can all say no, and town meeting can say, to heck with you, we're spending the money. It's their money, to an extent. So, I don't know, the idea of save it so we don't spend it doesn't seem to make sense to me.
If you have a change of mind, make your motion so we can move along.
Do I have a formal motion on, we'll take them one by one. We'll start with Article 9.
9 is a stabilization, the establishment of the fund, and Bob Bridger, we talked about Peter and that.
I'll put a motion forward for Article 9, to establish the capital stabilization fund for...
To place it on the warrant?
I will second Mr. Donnelly's motion.
Seconded by Mr. Lane. And that is to put it on the warrant, or is that, are you also including the support?
I think we just put it on the warrant for now.
Okay. Okay, great. So, motion made to put Number 9 on the warrant, seconded by Mr. Lane. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed. All right. And then, do I have another motion?
I'm going to talk about yellow sheet separate.
Yeah, that was my, but I think I would like to handle the yellow sheet aspect of it now. I would like to handle the yellow sheet aspect of Number 9 now, so.
I put a motion forward to, for the board to support Article 9, the capital stabilization fund.
All right, motion to support, seconded by Mr. Lane. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed?
No opposed at all.
Two opposed. All right. And then now we will move to Number 10, which is the initial appropriation for said fund. Do I have a motion for...
Oh, sorry. I was going to say, I would make a motion for, do we, or can we, motion for indefinite postponement, or is that something?
You can, you can, if you're not in favor of it, you can make a motion, take a position against it, and vote against it, or you can make a motion to remove it on the warrant. Don't even have to put on the warrant. Same as we, same as we did with accessory units.
Okay.
My recommendation, if that's the direction you want to go, this is just my recommendation. Allow it on the warrant, and I know there's some disagreement there. Unanimously vote indefinite postponement. That's my thought.
Yeah, I think that's what I was getting at.
The average town meeting member will say, okay, this is on the warrant at the request of X board. The selectmen recommend X.
I think that's what I would be comfortable with.
Okay. So, your motion...
Thank you for clarifying.
So, is your motion is to, you're going to move to put it on the warrant?
Yes. And then, when it comes to the yellow sheet, yeah. Okay, so the motion would be to place special town meeting Article Number...
10.
10 on the, on the warrant.
On the warrant.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Donnelly.
On the motion.
I disagree. I would withdraw the article from the warrant. State law puts responsibility putting the matters that are going to be discussed by town meeting on the selectmen. And at setting the meeting, we should listen carefully to what others have to say and be willing to disagree, so as long as we're focusing on the subject matter. We need to recognize the difference between acting and the wisdom occasionally taking no action, or in this case, putting certain matters before, or the certain matters should be before the town meeting warrant. I truly believe that this should, article should not be on the warrant at this time, for reasons I had stated earlier about funding, funding being wrong. That was my opinion on establishing it, too, because once you establish it, you're encouraging people to fund it. So, I'm just opposed to going forward with it.
All right. Further discussion?
So, Mr. Plasko, this would be to not have it on the warrant, so.
No, his motion is to support it.
Yeah, yeah. But I'm saying what you're talking about.
I would, yeah. Or at the very least, oppose it. Even if people thought philosophically different from me, and it should be the least on the warrant, then my personal position would be to oppose it.
Yeah.
To save the money. We don't want the $2 million, all the discussion we had earlier.
Right. Which I think I agree with. And now I'm getting wrapped up.
All right. So, the motion currently, unless it's withdrawn, is to...
Put the article on the warrant.
Yes.
You made that motion, didn't you?
Right.
Or did I?
That's why I was asking.
You could withdraw it and take it as two motions. Just everyone say withdraw, a motion to put it on the warrant, vote up or down, and then a motion on what the board's opinion to give to town meeting is.
Right. All right.
Maybe that's a clearer way to do it.
Why don't we try it that way? Do I have a motion for whether or not it should be on the warrant? And we'll start there.
Maybe to withdraw it from the, a motion to withdraw it from the warrant, Article 10. I'll make the motion to withdraw Article 10 from the warrant.
All right. So, motion made by Mr. Donnelly to withdraw, seconded by Mr. Plasko. All right. So, this is on withdrawal from the warrant. All in favor of withdrawing from the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And I'm going to abstain on that one. So, four to, four to zero. And then we'll handle now...
Well, I think if you've withdrawn it from the warrant, you're saying you're just not putting it on there. There's no opinion. Right. Now, it's not on the yellow sheet.
You're not giving town meeting the opportunity to do anything.
Yeah. No, I'm moving down to the next one that was held.
Okay, so, all right.
Yeah. So, that one's, that one's all set. So, the next one on the list is Number 12. Oh, no. Mr. Sad says he's all set with that, because we had asked the manager about legal balances. So, move down to Number 13. Accessory dwelling units as special residential use.
Didn't we do that?
I have that one as...
You've moved on to...
I thought we started with special town meeting one. I don't, we didn't vote to take out the ADUs yet.
Yeah, I had, we had it for discussion. So, now we're, we're down to that one, because didn't we do special town meeting?
Yeah, yeah. That's where we're on, special number two, right?
Yep. So, now we're on Number 2. Yeah. So, the only one that we held on Number 2 was just Number 13.
Right. So, Madam Chairman, I think in light of the presentation the other night, I think, although I think there's, we had talked about this being state law already, some things in place. The thing that I took away, Mr. Plasko, the comment that you made is that you don't want to see town meeting become the public hearing for this, for ADUs. At some point, you said that the other night.
Sorry?
You were talking about, you know, if we, if we put this forward, it's almost as if, because people are unfamiliar with the mechanisms of it, and the particulars that, it's almost as if town meeting would be like a public hearing for the article. And I think that that's what we want to avoid. And I think...
We want to make town meeting as simple and as official as it can, simple for town meeting members to handle and enact on.
Right.
And putting something like that on a town meeting for is not healthy.
Yeah. And I think it's a concept that still some people from, actually, the Planning Board were uncomfortable with. And so, that gave me some hesitation for this being kind of fully baked, to move it forward, even though it is, you know, state law. And I think that we want some clarity on what kind of local input and control we can have over something like that. And I would suspect that with just some more time, and maybe a smaller subcommittee, that could work.
Yeah. One thought would be that, take a member from the Planning Board, a member from the selectmen, planning director, myself, and some staff, and really take a look at this. Because there's a couple of things. First of all, it's allowed in Massachusetts, and having a bylaw or not having a bylaw means nothing in a sense. We have very little that we could regulate if we wanted to. The state regulations that we're required to follow that we'll put out are so strict, we almost have no flexibility. It would be good to give it some time, since they're allowed no matter what. And there's no, you know, trap doors out of this for us. Let some other towns deal with that. Let us deal with it and see what some of the problems are for a while. We'll be better informed. There's two other items that we would want to spend some time looking at that may not be part of the zoning, but because this is complex, it relates with it. One is, at some point, this board's going to look at whether we want to regulate short-term rentals differently.
And you had mentioned that on Tuesday.
And at some point, that inter, that relates to whether or not they go into a, there's something in the short-term rental law where you can regulate or prohibit them maybe from ADUs. That wouldn't go into the zoning, but that needs to be part of the discussion, so it's not sort of happening in a vacuum. And then at a staff level, we have to spend some time working out some of the concerns we have about how these are going to work, which I think are questions the public would have. To Mr. Plasko's point, they're going to get up to town meeting and say, so if my neighbor puts a tiny home behind there, how are you going to meter it? That has nothing to do with zoning, but you can only tell town meeting members, that doesn't have anything to do with the article, doesn't have anything to do with the article. Now, I know that the moderator can do that anytime she wants, but at some point, to Mr. Plasko's point, town meeting's going to say, so we want to know the impact of this zoning on us.
Right.
And you have no answers to any questions about the impact, other than the zoning. So, give us some time to work through a group and to work through that, so we can say, yes, this is how it's going to work. Yes, we know you can get a second sewer meter if you have to. We need to figure out how that's going to work for us. So, delaying it, I think putting a group together to look at it would bring something back with no specific timeline, maybe next March, maybe later. But really, to make sure we vetted it and looked at it, because it crosses into a lot of other policy areas, and crosses into the livability of the community and our business strategy, more than a bylaw that just regulates something we can't really regulate.
Only disagreement I have with what I just heard is, there's really no rush. This in itself doesn't really do anything, except for say that the law says. It changes our definition section at the very back of the book, and puts it with the definition is. Don't tell you anything about it, what to do or not. You have to know to go to the law. And if anything, this should be continued to at least make a reference to the law, so people know what book we're talking about, because it isn't anywhere else in the bylaw. They're not amending anything else in the bylaw, other than the use table, which we disagree with, too, but that's a different subject. But what I disagree with is, is there isn't a rush. Because right now, with all due respect, we're leaving it up to one person, the building commissioner.
Right.
To determine what, to determine whether certain things apply or not. If we put this in the way it is, just to cause confusion, some examples of where there might be confusion. They're talking about addressing it as an accessory unit, emphasizing accessory. So, if somebody goes to our zoning bylaw book, looks up under accessory, those uses or those dimensions, the setbacks, the size, it's different. For example, the law says up to 900. Unless the town has a bylaw that has other restrictions and you can justify it, otherwise it's a violation of the law. So, the state intends, or anticipates, the towns are going to have a separate bylaw that covers these units. If we go with just the current bylaw, it says the building commissioner use the law, which until we adopt the local bylaw, says up to 900 square feet. But does he go to our accessory unit that says you can have more than 600 square? Is he going to deny somebody who buys for a 900, because he's reading accessory that says 600? And who's making that decision, that he's made the right decision or not? Unless we have a bylaw to clarify what the town wants. And we should have the town conversation to decide any of these factors, not any, I have a view, you have a view.
Yeah.
How does everybody think?
Sure. And by no rush, I mean, it's not similar to 3A, where there's a deadline that something has to be done, and it's not, we have to allow them by a certain date or not allow them. So...
Yeah. It's just in our best interest to clarify those things and get it straight.
Right. But there's no looming deadline on our head.
Reasonably, reasonably, we would be looking at fall anyways, if you come back.
Yeah, right.
It's a definitive...
At this point, yeah.
Town meeting will thank you.
Wait a minute. I think you're getting out of here pretty easy at town meeting. We should throw something else in here for the moderator.
I don't think there's been a motion yet.
There has not been a motion.
So, I would make a motion to remove this specific article from special town meeting number two.
All right. So, motion to withdraw, seconded by Mr. Plasko. Any last discussion on that one?
Yeah.
All right, all in favor of removing number 13 off of special town meeting two, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, unanimous. All right, I believe that should be everything, correct?
I apologize for disparaging the City of Boone Sock, that wasn't my intention.
Yes, we always.
They built a $56 million water treatment plant to replace all four of their water tanks, so if you can give me the contact info, whoever told you that, somebody sold you a magic beanstalk and I'd like to talk to them.